All right, great. And then Amelia, do you hit the record button?
Recording in progress.
Excellent, I'd like to call the order of the April 13th, 2023 Lewisville Planning Commission meeting with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Howell.
Here.
Commissioner Krantz.
Here.
Commissioner Choi.
Here.
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Commissioner Basket.
Here.
Commissioner Osterman.
Here.
Chair Brownice.
Here.
Thank you all. With that then, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Then I would like to look at the approval of minutes. First, a motion for the February 9th, 2023 minutes? Well, first of all, do we have any corrections?
Yeah, I've got one.
Okay, great.
I think there was still an address in there that we wanted to eliminate from somebody who didn't want to have their address listed.
Oh, then we will skip that approval. That was supposed to have been cleared out by now. Thank you very much for checking that one. How about for the March 9th, 2023 meeting minutes? Do we have any corrections for that? Hearing none. Motion for the March 9th, 2023 minutes, please.
So moved.
Second.
That was...
Second.
Thank you. All right, great. All in favor? Actually, we're still stuck doing roll call. I want to double check with you guys, but...
I think you can do a voice vote for minutes when you're all here.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? I think we have one abstention from Commissioner Basket. Welcome.
Oh, since I wasn't there.
Right, yeah. And any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. We're going to jump in here to election of officers. If I... So, we have the vice chair and secretary positions. We're going to be rejiggering a little bit. We're aware of that. Then I would entertain a motion for nominations.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Howell for secretary.
Do we have to do them separately? Probably, huh? Yeah.
You can do them either way. You could vote together, but I think maybe discuss them kind amongst yourselves separately.
Oh, okay.
Or we can vote separately, too.
Why don't we just do them separately?
That's fine.
All right. I think that's great. I would happily second that.
That's what I...
Okay. Commissioner Choi gets a second. Any discussion on that?
Excited to have you join the...
Commissioner, appreciate it. Officers.
The officers, yes.
Excellent.
I'll jump in and make another nomination.
Okay, great.
Did we need to vote on that one first?
So, why don't we go ahead and vote first on this one? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Howell.
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yes.
Commissioner Choi.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Commissioner Basket.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Second nomination. Commissioner Krantz.
Does anybody else want to speak before I do? I'd like to nominate Commissioner Moline to be our vice chair.
Second.
And a second for Commissioner Howell, thank you. Any discussion of that? Nothing particularly needed, really, but if we're all okay with it. I'm thankful for both of you joining it, so stepping up, you jumping up, so... All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yes.
Commissioner Choi.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Commissioner Basket.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Howell.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you both. Now we have time for public comment for items that are not on this evening's agenda. If there's anybody here, you can jump up and down, let us know. And then can we double check with the Zoom?
There are two people online. Neither is raising their hand right now. Star nine if you're on the phone, then raise hand button if you're on Zoom or on the computer.
Oh, okay, great. Then we will move into our continued item, a planned unit development amendment, Centennial Heights West. I will now open the public hearing on a request for a planned unit development amendment, Centennial Heights West. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, well, in this case, the staff is acting as the applicant. After this presentation, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person, by computer, or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to complete a speaker card if you're here in person. Use the raise hand function if participating by computer, or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comment to three minutes per person. Pulling of comments is not permitted. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and city of residence or work. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing none. Do we have notification?
Public notice was properly met per municipal code.
Thank you. And do we have any disclosures from planning commission members? All right, excellent.
Thank you, Chair Brownice, and members of the planning commission, Lisa Ritchie, planning manager. Chair, I appreciate you updating your script, or if you worked with Elizabeth. Just to note for everyone, in case you were not aware, we're no longer asking for a specific address from public commenters, rather just whether or not they are a Lewisville resident or business owner or operator within the city. So, just a citywide policy change that we've begun to implement over the past few months, so thank you for that. Again, tonight, we're here to consider the Centennial Heights West PUD amendment, which this item was continued from March 9th meeting. Before you, on the screen is a little bit of context. The neighborhood is located on the northwest corner of Via Appia and McCaslin. The properties, all in pink, were properties that were destroyed by the Marshall Fire. This neighborhood had one home that was not destroyed. The PUD for the property was approved in July of 1992. No amendments have happened since that time, so the neighborhood developed under the PUD approved by the city in 92. The current PUD regulates only the perimeter fence that faces McCaslin Boulevard and Centennial Parkway. And just want to note for the record, like many of these others that you have seen up to this point, this was driven primarily for this neighborhood through the HOA and some conversations that have occurred within there. I want to recognize that, for those that I have chatted with, there are still a lot of conversations happening at the HOA level regarding this proposed fence, the funding of this proposed fence, things like that. The funding of the fence, the HOA kind of obligation, that's still happening at the neighborhood level. We haven't calendared city council for this, just to make sure that everyone is really on the same page with the HOA's role related to the note that we have on the proposed PUD, which I'll talk about here in a minute. So, just kind of want to note that this is still kind of an ongoing conversation, but for as far as the proposal as it relates to the design of the fence, staff's understanding is that this is, we're good there. So, the current PUD again regulates the fence with a hash bordering McCaslin Boulevard and Centennial Parkway. It currently requires a six-foot solid cedar fence with stone columns. Stone columns were not there prior to the fire, and I don't know if they were ever there, so that's something that, you know, the neighbors could say. But either way, they're not there now. There's not a desire to reconstruct them, so we'd be removing that from the PUD. And then because, again, our understanding at staff level is that this is an HOA-owned fence, the fence would be constructed by the HOA through kind of a singular permit, the regulation through the PUD would read, "A six-foot high solid fence shall be uniform in design and material to be owned and maintained by the HOA." So, currently, the HOA covenants, as I understand it, require the cedar wood fence. So, in all likelihood, the fence that would get installed would be cedar in accordance with the covenants. However, if these conversations continue to occur at the HOA level and they can come to a consensus around a proposed design, we wouldn't have to amend the PUD, right? That they would have flexibility in the final material that they select, provided that it's still a six-foot high solid fence and uniform in design and material. So, that's kind of where we are today. Happy to answer any questions that you all have for that. There's a representative from the HOA, there's representatives from the neighborhood here tonight. So, again, staff's comfortable with this proposal, given that the HOA, you know, highly unlikely that they would approve, you know, a neon orange fence that's, you know, going to be installed along McCaslin and Via Appia. However, you know, as it's written, there would be that ability to do so. So, kind of want to get your read on that, if this is timely at this point. So, with that, we're recommending approval of Resolution 7, Series 2023, recommending approval of the draft resolution to amend the Centennial Heights West PUD fence regulations. Happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioner questions for Lisa? Seeing none, thank you very much. Oh, yeah. Commissioner Krantz.
Just a quick question. Since this was proposed a while ago, I'm not sure how long ago, a couple meetings ago, I think, and it got carried over, I think there was some DOLA funding that was approved at the state level for fire hardening, and I'm wondering if that would impact the HOA's desire to move forward with a cedar fence if they're able to get funding grants for a fire hardened fence?
That's a great question that I would direct to the residents. However, my understanding is that primarily the mechanisms for the funding may or may not be able to be attributed to HOA-level fencing. We're still seeking clarification on that through DOLA. There are funding opportunities for home hardening that already are in place and approved for households of low and moderate income, so there are DOLA grants related to that for home hardening. I think HOA-level fences is still uncertain to me, at least from a funding ability.
Great, any additional questions? Seeing none, then, I would like to open a public comment. If anybody... Do we have speaker cards? Maybe, yes. Yeah, that's perfectly fine. And if you can begin with your name and whether you're, obviously, you're here as a resident, but... Whoops, and then there's a button at the base of the microphone? And then a little light should come on. Little green light.
Push.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Perfect.
Sorry.
Excellent.
Retired a couple of years ago, and the technology just improves, you know, immeasurably, you know, every month or so.
Name.
My name is Cheryl Udine.
Great.
I moved into Centennial Heights West in March of 2007. Lived there, loved it. Was really glad we all got out, because neighbors, we're helping neighbors. 1160 Hillside Lane, so almost at the top of the cul-de-sac. And I really, I read through your proposal, really glad that you're taking the time to take a look at all the neighborhoods that need to be rebuilt, refurbished, whatever. My question would be, in the absence of an HOA, would property owners whose property abuts onto McCaslin or Centennial Parkway, that would be the public streets, be responsible to the city of Lewisville for their fencing requirements? In other words, if we didn't have an HOA, would I just work directly with the city of Lewisville to make sure that I satisfied my fencing requirements?
So, actually, I see staff indicating a yes on that one, so...
Typically, we don't do Q and A kind of during public comment, but I will answer your question.
Okay.
Behalf for both you and if the commission requests me to.
That's all I had.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wanting to speak? How about Zoom? Can we double check Zoom? No hands there? All right. Any closing?
Yeah, so happy to clarify that. So, in the circumstance for this, again, you know, typically, if there's no, if it's not an HOA-owned and maintained fence, that it's responsibility of the private property owner to install a fence in accordance with the PUD. From the city's perspective, it's not, you know, it's only if a fence is installed that it must comply with the PUD. It doesn't require that you construct a fence, right? So, but yes, normally, private property owners would come to the city for a permit and build a fence in accordance with the PUD. So, where there's an HOA, though, however, typically, the HOA pulls the permit, and we kind of do a joint permit across all of the properties in order to construct a fence.
Thank you very much. I will now close the public hearing, and planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Maybe we can start at the far left with Commissioner Howell and just work our way down the row?
Yeah, I think this addresses the concern of the cedar fences and the growth of increased fire risks, so I think this addresses it as well. I think hopefully, the solid fence will be adequate for future planning and development of the fence.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yeah, I find myself in favor of this, if this is what the HOA and the community wants as well.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Choi.
Thank you, Chair. I don't really have too many comments about this. I do like the consensus that was driven by the HOA, and I hope that persists over time, so that there's good agreement in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Commissioner Moline.
I'm in agreement with fellow commissioners here and going to support this, and I think what we're doing here is helping set up a little, just a little bit of flexibility, so that if the HOA is able to find some options other than cedar, that this would give them that flexibility, and people could have a little more sense of security around fire issues if they can find that agreement. So, this sets them up to do that, I think.
Commissioner Basket.
I can support the staff recommendation.
Commissioner Osterman.
I also support the proposal and don't have any concerns. I think the most important part is that there's consensus that it would be uniform material, so no concerns.
I also find myself in favor of it at this time. With that, now I would entertain a motion.
I would entertain a motion to approve of Resolution Number Series 2023, Resolution approving an amendment to the Centennial Heights West Final Planned Unit Development Regarding Fence Regulations.
That's Resolution 7, yep, thank you. Roll call vote, a second? Who do we have a second? Commissioner Choi, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Choi.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Commissioner Basket.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Howell.
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes, motion carries. Good luck moving forward with it all. With that, then, I'll move into our next item of business, new business, a planned unit... I will now open the public hearing on a request for a planned unit development from the enclave. And actually, this is a motion to continue? So... So, I'm going to skip to that right quick.
Yeah, I apologize. You have in your packet a request to continue the enclave planned unit development related to their fence regulations. We're almost there. We need to just confirm a few more things with the neighborhoods who are requesting a continuation, I believe, to May 11th, the date in your packet.
Excellent, thank you very much. Motion to continue.
I make a motion to continue this item to May 11th, 2023.
Excellent, this is Resolution 8, Series 2023.
Thank you.
Call Mr... Commissioner Choi with the second, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Commissioner Basket.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Howell.
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yes.
Commissioner Choi.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes, thank you very much. Our next new item of business, I'll now open the public hearing on a request for a general development plan amendment, Centennial Valley General Development Plan, Resolution 9, Series 2023. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we'll have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person, by computer, or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to complete a speaker card. Use the raise hand function if participating by computer, or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Pulling of comments is not permitted. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter, may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and city of residence or work. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing no objections. Do we have notification?
That's correct, Chair Brownice. The public requirements were met per the municipal code.
Thank you. Do we have any planning commission member disclosures regarding this item? Seeing none, I would invite you to make the presentation, please.
All right, thank you, Chair. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Ellie Hassan. I'm Planner 2 with the city of Lewisville. And the item before you this evening is a general development plan or GDP amendment to the Centennial Valley amended and restated development agreement for the, to revise the uses permitted on the property at 972 West Dillon Road. And for a little bit of context, this property is located on the south side of Dillon Road, near the intersection of McCaslin Boulevard on the southwestern side of the city. There is currently an existing one-story commercial building on the site that is not proposed for any alterations at this time. And for a little bit of additional history, the subject property is about one-half acres in size, and the existing building out there is about 7,000 square feet. The property is owned planned community commercial, and it is part of the Centennial Valley General Development Plan, which was originally established in 1983. However, this property is part of parcel H, which was not adopted into the general development plan until 1988. The property was platted as part of the parcel H first filing, which went through two additional replats afterwards. And one of the things to note about this as well is, in Centennial Valley, there is a restated development agreement that was adopted in conjunction with the GDP, which was an agreement between the city of Lewisville and the original developer. And this agreement implemented development and public improvement plans for the Centennial Valley area, and has been amended from time to time to establish various regulations, which, in this case, one of the regulations was use regs for certain parcels beyond the general development plans listed uses. So, in this case, the, on this parcel at 972 West Dillon, the uses allowed are actually listed in the fifth amended and restated development agreement in section five and seven. And on the property, they did have a planned unit development and a special review use approved in 1999, which allowed a Kinko's as a retail use. And since then, there have been several administrative special review uses approved on the site for various uses, mainly consisting of retail. And this is a lot. I'm not going to go over every use that's proposed here. It is in the staff report if you do want further information. But the applicant is requesting approval of an 11th amendment to this amended and restated development agreement for Centennial Valley, and it would allow for new permitted and special review uses on the site. And it does leave in place the existing regulations for the remainder of parcel H, so this is just for the site at 972 West Dillon Road, which is clarified in that 11th amendment. And this table basically shows that, on the left side, you have the existing Fifth Amendment to that development agreement, which doesn't explicitly list any uses as being permitted on the site. However, with this proposed 11th amendment, there are various uses that are permitted by right that are being proposed. And one thing I did want to clarify, just based on some comments we received, so one of the uses that is permitted by right proposed in here is retail marijuana stores and various other listings based on the code. And with those different uses, they are regulated by right per Title 17. However, there are other parts of the municipal code, such as Title 5, that do have restrictions on that use, such as limiting the amount of licenses in the city. And on this slide, it shows the proposed special review uses and prohibited uses, both in the Fifth Amendment and in the proposed 11th Amendment. So, one of the big differences here is that a lot of the uses that were previously explicitly prohibited in the Fifth Amendment were being allowed by right in this amendment. And one of the other things to note is there are a couple of special review uses for churches and childcare facilities. And this amendment doesn't explicitly list anything as not being permitted, so anything that isn't explicitly listed in this amendment isn't going to be allowed use. It's just going to be the ones that were listed on this slide, and by special review use. And going over our staff analysis, we did find that this meets the GDP amendment's purpose and applicability statements in Chapter 17.72 of the municipal code. The GDP amendment encourages coordinated design by allowing for modern market-supported commercial uses that are consistent with the commercial properties along the Dillon Road and McCaslin Boulevard corridors. The other thing this does is, the amendment removes the requirement for a special review use for uses in the area that are otherwise allowed by right on other properties nearby. And moving into our analysis of the comprehensive plan and the small area plan, we do find that meets both the comp plan and the McCaslin Small Area Plan policies. This property is located in a part of the McCaslin Boulevard area on the comprehensive plan, and is described as a significant commercial activity center, and some of the framework policies seek to promote retention of existing commercial development and commercial retail uses. And this amendment helps retain them by making the uses allowed by, by making uses such as retail allowed by right on the site. The property is also subject to the McCaslin Boulevard Small Area Plan, and we find that this amendment supports the policies in that plan as well. The amendment increases opportunities for different types of uses, mitigating vacancy rates in the existing building. The permitted and special reviews has also helped meet the fiscal and economic goals of the city by complementing the existing hotel, restaurant, and retail uses nearby. And therefore, because of those findings, staff recommends approval of Resolution 8, Series 2023, which recommends approval of a general development plan amendment to revise permitted uses for 972 West Dillon Road and parcel H of the Centennial Valley General Development Plan as listed in the fifth amended and restated development agreement. And that does conclude my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions, and I believe the applicant's here as well, and he may have a few words to say afterwards.
Great, thank you. Commissioner questions? Commissioner Moline?
Thank you, Ellie. That was a great presentation. I have a quick question. My sense is that a lot of these use requirements and restrictions between some of the parcels in this development were, so that the overall development would have, like, a particular kind of restaurant in some of the parcels, and other kinds of restaurants, and other kinds of uses on other parcels. Does, is that, I mean, were you able to... I guess what I'm, where I'm going is, it's kind of curious to initially think about, like, why, why were these use regulations put on some particular site? And I'm wondering if, as you were doing research for this, if you have any sense of why that, why those restrictions were originally put in place.
So, that actually is something that, to be quite honest, staff never found anything conclusive on.
Okay, okay.
It is something where, when that initial Fifth Amendment came in, it was, the use It is something where, when that initial 5th amendment came in, it was, the use restrictions were mostly for parcel H down here in the amendment.
Okay.
Or in the GDP, and.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I've looked through the report and, actually, from what I could find between the draft and what was adopted, they did change it to put more restrictions, but I'm not sure what exact conversations happened to.
Okay, okay, okay.
Generally, though, you're correct, right? This GDP does, you know, allocate different types of uses throughout the development. A lot of that was initially driven, you know, years ago, related to capacity of the transportation network. In this particular property, in this particular parcel H, these use restrictions are much more specific and restrictive than, you know, a lot of the areas. And we did have a conversation with, you know, Cobol and Company, who is kind of the rights and kind of successor to the original development agreement. And they, you know, at least, you know, anecdotally, never really understood why this particular area was as restricted as it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Choi.
So I just wanted to follow up on a comment a little bit. Planning Manager Ritchie, you, you just kind of touched on the idea of potentially some of the original restrictions on the area may have been due to some of the kind of adjacent interfaces and transportation, you know, et cetera. And, you know, it's interesting to see just the, essentially, quite a number of the formerly prohibited uses being put up into the explicitly allowed by right. You know, that being said, I, I think there's a significantly different profile between an art gallery and a fast food restaurant, or a, you know, professional office versus a, a medical clinic or a, or an animal hospital. And I'm just wondering if staff, in looking at both the, you know, property uses and the, and the, and the the use types in the adjacent plots, if there was any consideration in generating this list of the uses permitted by right to some of those impacts that would be caused by potentially things like traffic impacts related to, you know, the different uses, especially with the relatively new, maybe I'm dating myself here, but the relatively new double diverging diamond that's there, and, you know, some of the other roadways that are potentially already restricted in some ways. Was there any consideration of any potential traffic patterns related to these general types of uses by right?
Traffic patterns weren't considered as part of the application, but when we were working with the applicants, all the uses that are listed there are ones that in the general, in Section 17.72, which goes over the, they have a section in there that does have a list of commercial and office uses that they see in other GDPs outside of Centennial Valley that uses referenced as permitted uses for commercial sites. So we did work with the applicant to say, okay, well, we're going to work with you on these uses because they, our uses that in other commercial GDPs in the city outside of Centennial Valley are generally permitted. And we found that for the size of the property, these uses would be ones where the uses that were proposed here wouldn't have significant impacts outside of other commercial zones.
Yeah, I would agree with that statement. We didn't require a traffic analysis associated with this amendment. For one, you know, retail is already on the site, and so retail is generally one of the higher, you know, generating uses. Restaurants can be as well. And traffic studies that we have done over the past five years or so, related to maybe things like parcel O, did show adequate capacity within the overall transportation network within this area that a site of this size that was already operating with a little more intensity, we didn't find that it raised any concern related to traffic on the network in this area.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Osterman.
Thanks. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question about understanding the column with the proposed uses, and just understanding a little bit more why certain uses would be put in the SRU category as opposed to the use by right, and why some of the use by right wouldn't be put in the SRU category. So just to understand kind of what, what's behind that, that decision.
Yeah, so one of the, so what those uses that were permitted by right, as mentioned previously, those uses are based on the 17.72 Commercial and Office Table, which is in the municipal code for other planned commercial community zone districts. So because of that, we did go off of that, of that presumption that, you know, in similarly zoned properties in other parts of the city that are under GDPs, these uses would be allowed by right in most notes. Like, for instance, I know one of the last projects I took was for North End, and North End has a note referencing the section that has similar uses as well. And that's a, there are similarly sized commercial buildings out there for that. So with those uses, we figured, you know, it's similar enough to other commercial zone districts that these uses made sense for the size. There were a couple that we did take out, like as mentioned here. We stuck with the Section 7 reference to what a restaurant's defined as, so we're not allowing drive-throughs on the site, just given the size and constraints on it. But then for the special review uses, those were taken out of the main code section in 17.12.040, or 030, excuse me, where on most properties in the city, both churches and childcare facilities are generally considered SRUs, just given the variable nature of attendance and time usage and things like that.
Any additional questions? Krista Howe.
Hi, thanks for that presentation. You had mentioned in your presentation that according to Title 5, there is a limit on licenses for medical marijuana. Wondering where we are on the number of licenses that we've already granted, and is this within the scope? I couldn't find that in Title 5. And then there'd be another question. One of the requirements for medical marijuana is that they don't allow one within 1,500 feet of another one. There used to be, that was burned in the fire, there used to be one across McCaslin, and I just wanted to, I didn't know if that was planned to rebuild and whether that was in 1,500 feet.
Great question. So our code currently caps retail marijuana stores at six. The, my, I'm not sure about the one over as far as rebuilding, as far as a vacancy, but the one that's located in this site was in place and approved, I believe, prior to kind of the lottery, when we opened up the application, when we amended the code. And so it's, it's legally valid to remain a retail marijuana use and would be subject to, you know, kind of any new site selection requirements. And so not all of our sites in Louisville comply with the separation requirements if they were approved under a previous authority and different regulatory structure, which maybe required a lesser buffer.
So just so I understand, there's six licenses, but there could be other stores that, other locations that could get a license, they just don't have one, or they have to wait in line potentially to get one?
City Clerk's Office implements that code. So I think more specific questions related to kind of, you know, the implementation and how those, you know, sites are selected and those operators are selected, we'd have to come back with you, back to you with more information.
One thing that I did find, just from looking this morning after your question, is I did check the City Clerk's website, and as of this morning at least, it did mention that all those licenses are filled right now. So from my understanding, I don't think they have any new ones available.
Okay. I think that explains, that understand, I understand the answer to the question, in that there, they would want that as an option for their store, dependent on whether they could get a license and the proximity to adjacent medical marijuana stores. Okay.
Yeah, even if you approve this as an allowed use, it still would be subject to all of the authorization that would require it under Title 5. This doesn't override, the approval of this as an allowed use does not override all of the requirements in Title 5. So I think that might be what you're trying to get at. Okay.
Additional questions? Commissioner Krantz, did you?
Sure, thanks. I have a couple of questions, this kind of that would be follow-up to the other commissioners' questions. But I'll, I'm going to jump into some, I'll jump into something that's a little bit new. Let me just find my question. Has, have you had a discussion with the applicant regarding the process for obtaining SRU approval? At the point when they determine what use that they want to have? Is there anything that was an issue with that process that didn't serve the needs of the applicant, making this amendment necessary?
Yeah, so actually, the history of the SRUs on the site is what led the property owner to eventually applying for this amendment. So at least in my time here, and there were other uses beforehand as well. There was, at the very least, one retail use that was on the site, which was moving from another property in parcel H. And at the time, from the parcel that they were on, didn't know they had to get an SRU, even though per that amended development agreement, they in theory needed to. So it led to some situations where, you know, we had some SRUs that did need to be put on the site, which in the end, we suggested that the applicant go through and amend the code, just to make it less restrictive for future retail and other uses.
So, so this was a staff recommend, staff recommended this to the applicant to change the GDP rather than to move through the SRU process?
Not necessarily. I mean, I think the applicant approached the city with just, I think, maybe even a business license or a tenant finish, and we identified the need for this special review use. So just through brainstorming with the applicant around different options, but I would not say that this was kind of the staff recommended path. I think we presented them different options, and they elected to pursue this path, just giving them more reassurance and ability to lease per-market decisions within this framework, rather than requiring every new tenant to come in for an SRU.
Yeah, I can, I can understand how that was come from. Just, just to follow up, can you say what the other options that were discussed? Just to help me understand this in context.
Um, I mean, I think really it was just whether or not we keep the SRU process in place, or, you know, go through a GDP amendment, and then through the GDP amendment process, you know, what, you know, what were the recommended uses, and kind of what all the different scenarios, how that, how a GDP amendment can play out.
Additional questions? I'm curious as to the, the thought of including office space on the first floor level. To me, it seems like that area, we rely on it, want it to thrive as retail and some of these other uses. So I'm concerned about office space, and also having churches and SRU possibility. Do you think office space is appropriate for that area?
That is a good question. I know that is something where, from what I did read in the comp plan, it is more focused on retail and service businesses. I think just in lieu of meeting some of those other requirements of, you know, trying to avoid vacancies on the property, which I know from what we've seen, there's been some encumbrances with getting uses on the property due to the special review nature of what they have proposed so far. I think we just wanted to keep the uses more open, just based on what we see in other commercial zones, but I, that is correct, that the McCaslin corridor is a bit more busy in the small area plan, does want to see more like high dense, it does encourage more high-density retail shops, so that is a good. Yeah, that's a good question.
Thank you. And then as far as churches go.
Yeah, I mean, sure. So as you all know, we're, you know, subject to relupa, the religious land use, whatever the religious land use regulation is that happens at the federal level, which means that the city can't treat churches really any other, any differently than any other use with similar impacts, right? So other assembly-type uses and gathering-type uses, we can't single out and treat churches differently. However, within our zoning code, SRUs are typically required for churches. So that's a consistent application of our code related to religious institutions.
Okay, so it just kind of cleans it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Any additional questions for, yeah, Commissioner Krantz?
Yeah, thanks. So the current building, I was just trying to understand in the, in the GDP lists, like the maximum square footage, or is it maximum density for each of the areas? Is the, how, is the current, I don't know if there's a plan to change the building, but in the future, if there was, if they were allowed to have a much larger building, or it was ever to be demolished, would, you know, I'm just trying to get an idea, what would be the maximum size there? So I could understand the traffic impacts as, for this area, depending on the uses. Like if it might become, I'm just asking if it might become a concern in the future.
So I think that would be, it would definitely be a separate process from what's presented to you guys. I think one of the things, and we have seen it for other parcels in this GDP, such as, I think for Fusion Academy, that, that might have come up, but in general, if there is a change in density or change of uses there, I think what we'd have to do, and there are still some vacant parcels around all of Centennial Valley, from my understanding, we cumulatively figure out, you know, what the occupation of certain uses is to see if there is any wiggle room. And if it is something that does request further density for specific square footages, it would need a further GDP amendment, from my understanding.
We have not hit any of the caps that are associated with any of the parcels identified with the square footage maximums on this general development plan. And as you know, any redevelopment of the site would require a PUD amendment, you know, consistent, and we would evaluate all of the impacts associated at the time of redevelopment.
Great, thank you. Yeah. Additional questions?
So I'm sorry, I still don't understand, what is the maximum, what it would be the maximum square footage that is allowed? I understand that we haven't reached the cap, but they would still have a use, a right to develop to .2, I think it said, for parcel H?
So we, I don't believe we, I would need, we probably need a little bit of time to look into the overall development that's actually constructed within the entirety of parcel 2, as it relates to, you know, kind of this particular lot. And so if, if that information is useful to you, then I would suggest maybe we continue the hearing, but I don't think we would be able to get that information for you this evening.
Thank you. Additional, final questions for staff? We'll ultimately invite the applicant up next. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, just to clarify why I thought that might be important, in case we, I don't, I just want to make sure everybody, we're all on the same page. If we are allowing certain uses that, if we could have, if it was, for example, we're allowing, like, many restaurants, or something that were a fast food restaurants, they're allowed, are allowed by, though they're explicitly not allowed, is that right? They wouldn't be explicitly not allowed, but they are allowed. Fast food restaurants would be allowed under this GDP, but how many, if, if, if this were allowed allowed by right, under this GDP, to go up to a density that would allow twice the size of the building, would then that impact or have a traffic concern? I understand that at PUD phase, we'd have another opportunity to look at that, but it's already a use, you know, it's, it's their right to develop up into that. It could be the right, by the GDP, developed to that maximum. So I was just concerned that the maximum, you know, that we might want to consider what that maximum would be. I mean, I don't know how, I just was hoping, before we stopped asking questions to staff, that maybe somebody else could answer whether they think it's important.
But I think that maximum exists today already.
So the maximum is in place today, and I just, yeah, we're not affecting the maximum. The other thing when we think about this in relationship to this particular lot is if you want to apply a maximum to this lot, this GDP amendment only applies to this lot, right? So we would have to come up with the appropriate maximum for this lot, because the rest of the property owners are not party to this, you know what I mean, to this amendment. And so we have to think carefully about, you know, kind of changing the broader GDP through this targeted amendment related to uses on only this lot. So, but, I mean, not to say we can't bring this analysis to you. Just.
I think I got it. So if they, if, so if, if there was a proposal to maximize the size of this building on this lot, it would have to be coordinated with all the other lots on parcel H.
So when a new development comes in within this general development plan, that's one of the things that we look at, and, right, is we make sure that any new development associated within this GDP complies with all of the provisions of the GDP, right? So because this is only a use restriction and not affecting at this time the size of the building, we didn't do this analysis. And so I'm having a hard time, I, I understand why you're asking, and I, these are reasonable questions. We just don't have the math to share with you tonight, because again, it's only regulating uses. The size of the building is not changing, therefore, we didn't do any analysis on size or maximums. Okay.
Any additional questions for staff? Seeing none, I'd like to invite the applicant up. Name and city, please.
Wade Arnold. I reside in Lafayette. I represent, I'm a commercial real estate broker with the Colorado Group, representing the building owner, and I appreciate the commission's time tonight. I don't have a whole lot to add. Ms. Hassan did a very nice job in presenting what we're looking for. I think it's pretty straightforward. Just a little background, so this building owner, he purchased the building several years ago. There were several uses that were in the building, actually, that are prohibited uses. There were several uses that were in the building, actually, that are prohibited uses under the, under the GDP, and assumed that those were allowed uses in there. They've since left. We're looking to backfill the building, so we don't have huge vacancy out there. And as we've begun that process of doing that, we've run into hurdles on either uses being prohibited, specifically the medical uses. We had a bodywork chiropractic, we had an imaging center that was in there when we first, when he first purchased the building. We're currently working with a tenant now who's very interested in going into the building. It's chiropractic use, just a small husband-wife looking to open or relocate their chiropractic office to the city of Louisville out of Boulder. And so that's what's really spurred this application tonight. We did run into, with another retail tenant, the same thing. They were allowed use, but we had to go through the use review process. And, you know, as this is a small building, I think you saw, it's about 7,100 square feet, and we have three different suites in there. So we're talking, you know, 2,000, 3,000 square foot tenants, pretty small. Typically, those tenants, when all of a sudden they run into, I have to do what? I have to go through a whole, what kind of process? They leave. And so it's very, very cumbersome and problematic just for the building itself as far as leasing, which is why we wanted to try and clean it up, just to make it easier going forward, to try and mitigate vacancy, make it easier for small businesses to operate, just a cleaner path forward, not gum up city staff on, hey, can we bring a retail tenant in here? You know, the uses, again, as, as was presented, I think, you know, they go, that, we based it off of other commercial zones around, so we're not asking for anything outside of the, outside of the norm. That's the, that's the background. I, again, appreciate your time tonight.
Great. I think we may have some questions for you, if you can hang out. Questions for the applicant? I'm curious as to whether, right, so there are two office uses mentioned in there. Would you, what's your reaction to perhaps excluding those from these lists of use by right?
So when it comes to office, I guess, I don't know, I, I'm not familiar enough with the city code and what constitutes office. I would see in a building like this, where you could have office uses, again, it's probably more service-related, I could see financial, you know, uses, Edward Jones offices, I could see real estate offices. So I can see, you know, I can see office uses in there, more service-oriented. But again, I'm not familiar enough with the code to say, does that fall under office? Or, to me, when I think of office, that does. And I could see those uses at some point. That's not what we're looking for now. But I could see that being a desired use in the building down the road.
Okay. Any additional questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Commissioner Grantz?
Thank you. I was wondering if you had any communications with neighboring tenants or the hotel, or if, I mean, you, was there any feedback or anything from, I, from your, from the notification that you gave to the neighbors?
There's no feedback that I've had directly and that I'm aware of from any of the neighbors. In fact, I would believe probably most of the neighbors never assumed or realized that there were so many restrictions on the property. Again, you know, going back just historically, you know, there's been a Kinko's in there, there was an imaging center in there, you know, there was a bodywork, massage, chiropractic uses in there. So just based upon the uses and what we're asking for, I'd venture to guess any of the neighboring property owners would be scratching their head why we, why we're, why we're doing it, because they didn't realize that the restrictions were there.
Any more questions? All right. I'll now open up to public comment. Do we have anybody on the Zoom? Seeing none? All right. Welcome, your response and closing statement?
I, I think I've.
Questioning or whatever, yes?
No, I think I've addressed everything, and again, appreciate the commission's time, and hope we can clean up what's become kind of a cumbersome process on, on this particular property. So thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. And a staff response and closing statement?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Thank you. I will now close, well, actually, before we close the public hearing, because I might have a question for you all. Commissioner Grantz, did you have a question?
I just had one more question from staff. I'm sorry to bring this one up, but the, the wording in this list doesn't exactly match the wording in the code. Like, for example, this one has, the other, the codes would say museums, and this one has art galleries, you know, but like, was the intention to simplify the words in the code to make it more user-friendly, or would it be easier to have the exact, like, number?
So just pulling up the code, we were pulling, we were pulling from 1772-90, commercial and office. And I'll let Ellie answer, I think, the specific language that she coordinated with the applicant.
For example, I was, sorry, I didn't have it up, but it says cultural facilities such as museums, theaters, art galleries, and churches. But we meant to just say art galleries, not including museums and cultural facilities. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, like, what you meant when you're just saying art galleries, that you are not saying everything in number four by shorthand with art galleries.
Yeah, it was, I believe the language for that one in particular did come from the applicant. So we as staff just figured if, they're actually, actually, what we received from the applicant was a little more restrictive than what ended up being put in place, just because staff did note that there were some examples, such as, in this case, medical clinics was the big use that I know Wade touched on, Wade, the applicant, touched on as well. But there were ones like Amel Hospital and Clinics, which were similar, that staff suggested saying, you know, this is a similar use that's compatible, maybe consider it if you want it in there. But as, from what I know for art galleries specifically, I think that was just from the applicant, and we didn't really see a need to change that one. But yeah, you are correct, there are some that are abbreviated from this. It was, the list that the applicants gave me initially was abbreviated from these lists.
So medical facilities, so we have number nine is hospital and medical clinics, but this, when you say medical clinics, you're not saying, saying hospital and medicals? We're going with the more restrictive?
Yeah, that's correct. It would just be medical clinic, just because the definition, there are separate definitions for hospitals and medical clinics. And from looking at this, the definition for hospital was a bit, staff figured it was a bit intensive for the size of the property. And then similar things apply to, like, nursing and rest homes, for instance.
Commissioner Choi?
Just one last question for staff that I just thought of. In the, in the, the planning commissioning staff report, the image and the overlay that you have on the property, is that red line relatively accurate in terms of the limits of where this applies?
Yeah, so that actually is a good question, because the original legal description for this property does include both lot 1B or 1 Bravo and tract C. And both of those properties are technically 972 West Dillon. However, we took out tract C, even though it is technically part of the property, just because that is a drainage retention pond and is undevelopable at this point, just with the way it's, with the way the site's cited. So because of that, we just include lot 1B, even though technically the address spans multiple parcels in that subdivision.
Perfect. That was exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
I want to double check back in with you on this thought of offices. And, and the focus being retail, and actually, sales tax generation. And so something like a Charles Schwab or something might not generate sales tax for us at that point in time.
While that, that is correct from a sales tax generation, it is, you know, consistent with other uses within this area and zone, zone district. You know, office uses serve to activate our commercial areas, and they may not generate revenue, but they can provide revenue through, you know, secondary trips. And, you know, you have someone who's going to their, you know, financial advisor, and then maybe they pop over to Mad Greens and go to lunch while they're there, right? So staff wasn't particularly concerned. And also, given the relatively small size of this site, this site itself, you know, is unlikely to be a massively revenue-generating source for the city, just as it is. So we were comfortable allowing offices a use by right.
Great, thank you. All right, final questions? And actually, if, if you wanted to say anything else to our discussion, you'd be welcome to at this point? No? Okay, great, thanks. I will now close the public hearing, and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin?
Chairman Brown is, you know, I'd like to hear more about your concerns about the office space before I get too much into my thoughts. I think there could be some validity between, behind your concerns, and I'd like to hear a little bit more about that.
Sure, yeah. So initially, my concern is that we would be converting something that had retail sales and therefore, sales tax generation to something that wouldn't have that anymore at that point in time. But for me, at this point, thinking about the size of that building currently, and thinking about how it can generate, you know, more activity in that area, I'm not as concerned as I was initially. So that's where I'm at with it.
Thanks, that helps me. Sometimes there's something I'm not thinking about that I, I'm glad you pointed out.
Any other deliberations, thoughts, questions, concerns? And please, if you're, if you'd indicate which way you're leaning.
Chair, I'll offer something?
Please.
So I appreciate the thoughtful presentation that went into this. I think it's, it's well thought out, does consider a lot of the ramifications. I am generally in support of the proposal from staff. I think that as we, as we think about what the site is now and what it could be, and what it would mean to make any adaptations to either the existing facility use or potentially modifications to the facility. One thing that I think would be beneficial for the property owner to explore would be to really optimize any of the, you know, parking areas and drive paths within the property boundary, understanding and appreciating that the water quality feature there for the detention pond is a limiting factor in the overall flow. I, I know that that area, because it is a high use for retail, because there are a lot of cars that go in there at different times for different uses, it can be a difficult to navigate area that, you know, can be problematic just from an overall traffic flow, but also from the perspectives, like, I, I think back to September of 2013, and, and how difficult it was, quite frankly, to navigate a fire apparatus through those parking lots, to look for people in their cars that were parked in one area or, you know, other things. And even just the overall aspects of the limiting features right now of how the lot is arranged with the parking areas. So that was my question about why, you know, what was inside the, the property line and the, and the lot line, and what could be a consideration for future. But that's my only consideration, is I generally support it. I think the uses are appropriate. I'd love to see some more tax revenue-generating use, you know, if we can increase any density there. And my questions about the transportation adjacencies, I, I think, you know, are just a consideration, but not a problem. That would be my only recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
I can go next. Yeah, I'm going to be in support of this. I appreciated the discussion about office uses and, and the discussion about retail and sales tax generation, and I, I find myself in concurrence with staff on, on that, about the sizing and the consistency with other commercial areas in the, in the, in this general part of the city. So, and then from a perspective on the uses, then, so I'm, I'm comfortable with this. And then some of the other good points that we've just been talking about, I guess, to me, those would be addressed at a time when the facility came in for some kind of an upgrade and needed a PUD amendment, and then we could, that would be the, the appropriate time to tackle these issues about traffic flow and parking and concerns like that. So since tonight, we're just focused on the uses, I'm very comfortable and appreciate the staff recommendation. So that's where my support is tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Osterman, can I ask you to run with it, and then we'll just work our way back down?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. So I'm, I'm also in favor of this resolution. I, I think that it's, it's great to hear that the uses included are, are in line with some of our other commercial areas in the city, so no concerns there. And I think most importantly, just hearing from the applicant about how the process has become really burdensome and cumbersome, that's concerning. I definitely want to see that area have less vacancies, so I'm in support. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Basket?
I'm also in support of the motion. I would like us to be business-friendly in the case of this area, and I think the diversity of uses that we're suggesting be allowed are appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Grantz?
Thanks. I find, I, I think that this sounds like a real, a real need to change this so that there's more flexibility and the process is easier. I'm just taking a look to make sure that we don't have any problems, like, down the line. So if this is zoned for retail, if, if it's used as an office, I guess this is a question for discussion, would we have different requirements for the design guidelines? The GDP does say whether or not it's going to be office or retail? Do we have a parking, do we have, do we know which parking requirements would, would apply? Do we, I just kind of should have asked this to staff, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, we've closed that part of the question. Section.
Yeah, I, I think that I, I'll convince myself that that can be dealt with otherwise. But let me just ask one more. This is just a kind of a rhetorical question here, but this is great. It's, it would help the, it would help the, to reduce vacancies for this parcel. But if we're going to amend the GDP, I just want to, like, just ask myself, and maybe ask all of us, if we were to make the same, if we were to make the same concessions, I guess, in what allowed uses for all the lots in parcel H, would that be, would that be a good thing? I just wanted, I'm kind of asking myself that question as I'm considering this. If we were to, if this is a good idea, shouldn't it be a good idea for everywhere? And I, I feel like I might have some concerns about that, so I'm kind of just talking out loud here. But I think that we want to be, we want to make this easier, but at the same time, a little, I just wanted to bring it to the discussion, what would happen if we allowed all these uses by right in all the other parcel, all the other places in parcel H, or all the other areas that are retail in this whole GDP? So I'm a little bit concerned about that, but otherwise, I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Howe?
Yeah, I think those are valid questions. One of the advantages I think Louisville has, when you look at the big picture, is that we're smaller, or a smaller city, and we have the ability to remain very flexible. And that allows us to be competitive in attracting businesses. So we can change some of these things on a certain site or a certain parcel. And the reason I say that is because it seems like a lot of local businesses are failing. I think that the current economic conditions are very competitive, and there's a lot of demands on businesses. The ability to be a successful business in this area is challenging. And I think this gives us a little bit more ability to engage tenants, lower the vacancy rates, which we've been trying to think of ways to do over the last few years in Louisville. And one of the consistent feedbacks we get from citizens is, man, there's a lot of vacancy, a lot of commercial vacancy. And I think this small step allows some flexibility in this one parcel. Whether it would be broadened out to other areas of the city, I don't know. But this does give the commercial building in this lot a little bit more flexibility to, to get other tenants to reduce our vacancy rates. And I think that alone is leading me to support this proposal. There are bigger questions. There are bigger questions, sure, and other things that we can talk about. But regarding this particular proposal, I think I'm in support because of those reasons.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for addressing my concern too. I appreciate you indulging me in that. If it was to, if we were to, like, the hotel should fail, would this be, I just, would this be a good idea to allow the same uses on that site? It sounds like we agree that it probably would.
I don't know that we agree.
I know that we don't need to answer that question, that, we don't have to answer that question. We haven't discussed that, but I'm just saying that, just looking at the, just a fairness issue, is if this is going to, you know, this is going to provide a community benefit that we are going to allow flexibility here. I'm just wondering if we, I think that we've kind of, we're discussing it now, whether or not it would be something that's fair to offer one site and not all the other sites.
Yeah, so I find myself in favor of it as proposed for those reasons. Actually, Commissioner Howe just mentioned that for this site, that it offers that flexibility. I think it's important to maintain occupancy for that site in this fashion. I don't think this has any sort of precedent setting for what we would allow on other sites. I mean, I know legally it doesn't, and that would be part of a whole nother discussion, especially going from something as different as from a hotel to something like this. So I think that's just part of a much larger discussion of what we hope to see happen in that area. But for this evening, I'm in favor of it. Any other thoughts on the issue before we have a vote?
Chair, I'll move to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Eight Series 2023 for the approval of the GDP amendment to 972 West Dillon, parcel H.
Hold on, thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
This is Resolution Nine, right? Yes, Resolution Nine, Series 2023. With a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Basket?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes, thank you very much for your time. All right.
Chairman Brownice, it says Resolution Eight, I just wanted to confirm.
What does?
I just wanted to make a note to staff. On the Planning Commission staff report, it's listed as Resolution Number Eight, but on the agenda, it's listed as Resolution Number Nine.
We'll make sure that the resolution that is signed is correct. And I think we had, because Enclave got continued is where I think we kind of screwed up our order. So whatever we put in front of you, and it won't affect your authorization of this.
Okay, great, thanks.
As Secretary, I'll make sure that is accurate.
Official first.
Flex that muscle. Why don't we take a five minute break, please?
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
I will now open the public hearing on a request for a minor subdivision, Nicholas De Giacomo. Addition replat B 1209 Main Street. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we may have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person, by computer, or telephone, may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to complete a speaker card. If you're in person, use the raise hand function. If participating by computer or star nine, if calling in by telephone, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Pulling your comments is not permitted. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony, not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I'll then close the public hearing. No further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and city of residence or work. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing no objections, do we have proper notification?
Yes, Chair, it was noticed as required.
And do we have any planning commission member disclosures? Seeing none, invite you up for the presentation, please.
Right, and I would request advance apologies for all the ways that I'm going to mispronounce the name of this subdivision. But thank you, Chair, and thank you, commissioners. My name is Amelia, I am the Historic Preservation Planner. Nice to be with you here for the first time. So yes, this is the Nicholas De Giacomo Addition, replat B. Just for some starter background here, it's part of the Nicholas De Giacomo Addition that was platted in 1907. And it is subject to the Old Town Overlay Zone District and also the Residential Medium Density Zoning, so the RM zoning. And then just to give a little more detail on kind of why this is coming before you and why we're here tonight. So this actually came before the Historic Preservation Commission as a request to allow the full scrape of this property. And up on the slide here in front of you, you have the historic photo of the property from 1948 and then one from 2022, so more recently. And so at that time, the developer had purchased the property and had sort of loosely planned four units on the lot. But then when it came before the Historic Preservation Commission, which for those of you who are unfamiliar, properties that are structures that are built in 1955 or before go through an automatic demolition review process, depending on the scope of the demolition. A full scrape automatically does trigger that type of review. So it came before the full commission, this was back in the early fall, I want to say September of last year. And the commission actually has the ability to place a stay on the demolition of up to 180 days. So six months is the span of what they can do, and that's what they placed on this property. The goal of placing that stay, as it was stated at the time, was to work with the applicant, the developer, to come up with creative solutions for how to protect this property. I won't give you the full fun history, but you know, basically, there's a strong social significance here. It's associated with the Collacci family. For those of you who don't know, it's an important Italian family, several different pieces of Louisville's history. So it has very strong social significance there, also ties to different economic histories in Louisville. It has architectural significance and physical integrity, which you can sort of see the relatively unchanged condition the house appears to be in. And this is a common form for the time in which it was built as well. So again, leads to the fact that we're probably looking at something that was pretty similar to the early 20th century form. So that what we do after demolition reviews is we meet with the applicants, meet with the property owners. Sometimes commissioners are involved. And we all got together and talked about, you know, what are some options that would work potentially for the applicant that also would result in the protection of this structure in particular. And so that's really, you know, why we're here. The applicant brought forward an application for landmarking to the Historic Preservation Commission in December, based on those conversations. And so that was recommended to the city council to be landmarked. The stay then ended in January, so we're out here in April and the applicant is still working through this process. But if this were to pass planning commission and go up to city council with your recommendation, that's when we would bring in the actual final landmark application to city council, since it's council that actually finalizes that process. We bring it at the same time as the subdivision, so that would be the plan moving forward. And then I also just want to note, you know, we are talking about a historic building here, and I'll use that term. But that doesn't just talk about its age. It's not historic just because it's old. It's historic because we've done, as staff, quite a bit of research on all of the rich history that's associated with this property. The fact that it hasn't really changed that much since sort of the age of social significance, if you were, well, the period of significance. And so it's really, it has a historic value to the house that goes above and beyond just the age. And that's also something, of course, that's been recognized formally by the HPC. I'll also let you in on a little secret. The HPC does not get people coming to their commission hearings very often. And there were people testifying to protect this house at that commission meeting. So again, just speaking to the interests from the community. So what's the actual request before you tonight? Basically, we have 1209 Main outlined in yellow and taking that one lot and subdividing it into two and then adding a utility easement. This subdivision would require several modifications. The full descriptions are in your staff packet and they're also up there on your screen. Happy to talk through them more in detail, but they all really relate to lot size or lot configuration in one way or another. And then in reviewing these modifications and the request overall, staff used this final plat criteria and subdivision design standards. And other than those four modifications noted in your staff packet, staff finds that this conforms with all of the other requirements of Title 16. And then to speak specifically to the modifications, staff finds that they all support, you know, the criteria one way or the other. So first and foremost, the modifications support the comprehensive plan and the preservation master plan, both of which contemplate preserving historic buildings when possible. This also would represent a reduction in density. So the standard that we're dealing with here is that a modification doesn't increase density, but in this case, it would actually take what's possible from four units down to three, just to note that. And then also, in terms of maintenance of character, you know, even though it's really a change of configuration from what's there now, as you can see from the aerial and also from the table that was in your staff packet, this would actually bring the lot configurations more in line with what was there historically and what's actually there currently on the block. And then, of course, this is preserving a historic building that's been there for over 100 years. So again, I would think that that would speak to character maintenance as well. In terms of relating the modifications to a unique physical condition, staff finds that that unique physical condition is the existence of this building and that this is not a situation that was brought on by the applicant. The building existed long before the applicant purchased the property. And of course, the initial desire was actually to scrape it, right? So this situation is not necessarily created by the applicant in that sense. So with that, staff's recommendation is a conditional approval of Resolution 10, Series 2023. That condition would be that prior to city council hearing, the applicant shall provide a four by four utility easement on the southeast corner of Lot One, as described in the first referral comments that you all had in your packet. That's my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, questions? Ah, yes, Commissioner Basket.
So clarifying question, so if the demolition had been permitted, four units would be allowed?
Right, so I mean, we didn't do, there wasn't a permit associated with that, just to be clear, but yes.
I understand, just by density.
Just by density, exactly, because it's a little over 14,000 square feet.
So in the memo, it says then, this allows the density, reduces the density from four units to three. So the historic house plus two?
Yeah, so I think we were thinking strictly, again, from lot sizes. And the one, so this would produce one that was slightly over 7,000 and slightly under. The one that's slightly over 7,000 would theoretically allow a second unit on the landmarked property. But then the one to the north would, is too small to have anything more than one, because the minimum is 3,500 per dwelling.
Great, thank you.
Additional questions, Commissioner Choi?
Thank you, Chair, thanks for the presentation. With the proposed lot line adjustment and the breakdown from one to two, what would be the distance between the new lot line and the north side of the existing landmark structure?
You know, that's a great question. I can pull up the survey that they have, but I don't have that readily accessible.
One moment, I can grab it.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Essentially, side yard requirements.
The side yard setback.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yeah, can you describe a little more how, like, showing us the, when you show the diagram, how you would fit the second unit behind the historic property?
Yeah, so I-
Would it be accessed from the alley?
So I would say that, you know, I don't know that that's the applicant's plan, and if that, if this were to be landmarked, that would be go through preservation review and would have to respect the historic landmark, so all of those pieces. And I don't really know feasibly from setbacks, you know, but strictly from a lot size, it's greater than 7,000, so they could have two units on there. And I would say anything, you know, that has an alley in Old Town, the requirement is to access from the alley, so it would access in some form from the alley if they were to put some second unit on the, on that lot.
Additional questions? Seeing none. So do we have people online, or is the applicant?
Yes, so the applicant is here online, yeah.
Okay, great, all right. If we can invite the applicant online to provide a presentation?
And I'll let Amelia answer your question after the applicant speaks, as she knows we're all, to find it probably quickly, more quickly than I do.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you very much.
Awesome. Yeah, my name's Ben. Sorry, I'm not there. I've got two sick boys and moms. One night out was tonight, and Grandma and Grandpa don't want to touch them, so I'm here. Long story short, I live in original town Superior, and when we lost all of our house, we lost a lot of history, which was kind of lame, right? And this is a very unique situation where we get to preserve history, but I'm a builder, and I want to make money as well. And so it's a cool piece where the house will stay, we get a lot that will allow us to do what we maybe originally intended, and the 180 stay that was actually placed on this was actually a really cool outcome that made it a win-win. So any questions you guys have? I think Amelia did a great job, and yeah.
Great, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Are we have the answer for the side yard requirements?
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, so confirm that it's exactly at five feet, and now that I'm also remembering the process that it took us to get here, that's why the line is where it is. It's really meant to be allowing that current building to meet setbacks and to kind of be protected.
Great, thank you. Then I'll open it up to public comment. Do we have anybody online for public comment?
I see two folks online, so if you'd like to make public comment, please hit the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or star nine for the one calling in by phone.
Seeing none, all right. Then we would invite the applicant to make a closing statement if they choose to.
Yeah, I just wanted to state a couple things. You know, our intention is the, the current historic house is pretty much a 50 by 140, so the side setbacks are the same. We wanted to keep it like that. The new lot that is being created is, I think, one foot too short to be in that 50 by 140 kind of orientation. So the reason we couldn't split this originally is because code states you have to have a 60-foot frontage. So really, both of these lots are 50 by 140s, very, very, you know, indicative of, you know, original town or old town Louisville, so I don't think it's going to, you know, hurt the character in any way. We don't have any ability to do two lots on the new lot that's being created at this point because of the size, so it would be a single-family house that will, you know, obviously have character and all the restrictions that Old Town Overlay has, so.
Great, thank you very much. Staff?
No closing statement, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I will now close the public hearing, and planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Why don't we begin at the far left? If we can ask Commissioner Howe on your thoughts?
It seems pretty straightforward, right? You're splitting the lot, and you're allowing the owner to build the house that they want while preserving a historical structure. But I think there's more to it. I'm just trying to work those details through. So can I pass and listen to everybody else's while I digest that?
Certainly, yeah, we can move our way down the line. Yep. Commissioner Krantz.
Yeah, I'm feeling the same way. It does seem, it actually does seem pretty straightforward to me, too. It sounds like, I like the way the applicant put it, a win-win. I mean, and I, I just have to say that the history was amazing, and I really appreciated reading that whole, the whole story behind the house in the packet. But yeah, I'm interested in what everybody else has to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Choi.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's interesting, there are very few lots in the area that have this potential. I'll be honest, whenever I see one of these lots that has the ability to be subdivided and still meet relatively consistent size standards, one of my concerns is the rarity that's created by the new lot and the ability to, to, to come in and I want to be very careful about how I say this. The rarity that's created by essentially a vacant lot with the ability to put in a brand-new home that may not necessarily contribute to all of the potential aims that the city has as priorities for continued development and growth. And while I, while I, while I agree that currently, the oversized lot with a, you know, huge parking area and driveway and detached garage doesn't meet the character at all of the surrounding area or the surrounding lots, and I would love to see something happen to transition that area to be more characteristic of the Old Town neighborhood. I do, I, I think, I, I kind of share a sentiment with the commissioners to my left where I'm, I think I might have, you know, some concerns about what potentially could happen, but it's not my job to think about, you know, all of the, all of the potentials as pitfalls, but just to consider the application as it's presented. So before I give an opinion about my position, I would love to, as my fellow commissioners, love to hear what everybody else has to say.
Great, thanks. Commissioner Moline.
Yeah, thanks very much. Yeah, I'm, I'm fully in support of this, and one of the reasons is because that stay is gone. And so one of the, I think, is if I understand, if we had a situation where the applicant chose not to take this, take, you know, kind of work with us anymore, they could pull away and, and scrape this house. And so I think that would be just a tragedy, in my opinion, and so I'm very much in support of this. I'm really thankful that, that our, our community came out and that we were able to get an applicant. I really appreciate that the applicant has been working with our staff, with our HPC. I want to thank their work on this. And so I think this is a really good win-win, and we get to, we get to retain a historic structure, a really important historic structure, and again, thanks, Amelia, for all the work on that. And, and we, and we get to have an additional residence in Old Town, and I'm, I'm, you know, in support of adding some density to our town even, so I, I kind of see that win-win here. So I think that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Commissioner Osterman. Commissioner Basket. Right, I'm looking around.
I'm also in support of this proposal for a lot of the reasons that Jeff, just Commissioner Moline just said. The oversized lot, double-sized lot there has great potential, and this is the place where we expect to get very high-quality housing that would bring residents to a special part of our town. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Osterman.
Thank you. I think I'm also in support. I'm, I'm trying to think of any potential downsides, but having a tough time coming up with any, and I think it's pretty great that, that, that this is the outcome from the process and that we're able to preserve a historic structure, so I'm in support.
Thank you. I also find myself in support for those, for those two big reasons. One is, it's fantastic the applicant is still willing to save this house. We've seen a few too many cases where they haven't. They'll just outlive their stay of demolition and go ahead with the demolition and, and build what they want. In this case, too, you know, the picture that's on the screen here in the bottom right of, you know, showing the lots around there, it kind of reminds me of like an elementary school exercise where you're like, draw the missing line. And it's straight down there where it's being proposed, in my opinion, my observation. So while, I mean, personally, I love the funkiness of the way it is right now, I completely understand where they're coming from and why they want to do it this way, and appreciate, actually, that they're willing to do it this way. So I'm in support.
You know, Chair, I appreciate what you said and what the other fellow commissioners said as well, and I think, for whatever reason, just listening to the, to the rest of you kind of give your opinions, I was able to maybe work through the little wrinkles that I had in my brain, and that it, you know, I, I am, I am definitely in support of continuing, fostering, creating, and even improving, you know, more Old Town character, right? All the houses that are down there are great. They contribute to the economic vitality of all of, you know, Main Street and, and, and the town. And I think where I was having trouble before was in the way that they contribute partially to the economic impact in town was also where I had a little bit of misgiving, because, you know, the, the fact of the matter is, when, if, if this lot gets divided, if that garage gets taken down and demolished and another house is constructed there, it is going to be a very expensive house. But that's not the fault of the developer, right? That is simply the market condition, and my, you know, hesitancy about creating another, you know, quite frankly, like, unaffordable house for the majority of people is by no means the fault of the developer, right? It is simply the market conditions, and I think it took me a second to have to, or to be able to separate that out in my thinking. And I, and I do, to the point that you all said, do appreciate the developer, developer's position to continue to work with the city to preserve not only what we have, but potentially and hopefully build more character into it that way. So from that regard, I'm, I'm in support.
Thanks, yeah. I mean, I guess the whole future ball of what it may look like in the future, again there, I'm right there with you. We may not love that, but that's a whole different thing that's not our purview, kind of, so that's where I, where I do support it as is, and acknowledging that, yeah, you know, who knows what it will look like, but, but our laws cover certain maximums, and those are what are in place right now. So, so we don't have the ability to change those laws anyway. So that part of it, I can see it, it is what it will be, and this is what we do have control over, so. Commissioner Krantz?
Yeah, I really appreciate you thinking out loud so we can, you know, make sure that we're not missing something, because it does, you know, like I said, it does sound like a good idea, and I was just thinking about what Commissioner Howe was saying that you might, do, do we look enough at the utilities and the infrastructure that exists there to feel good enough that that won't be an issue? The utilities, the parking, the frontage, and things like that? I didn't see anything in the packet that made me think that we didn't, but I was wondering if that might be something that was one of your misgivings.
Well, I'm pretty confident with the, I, I see where you're coming from, and I've read that carefully, the memo response, where there's, seems to be a lot of detail to the plating and the electricity and water. My feeling is that the city permit and the city engineers would clear that process and make sure that it's, there's no pitfalls. I guess my original reservation was increasing density of down, the downtown area, but I the counterbalance is that we're maintaining a historic building, and I think that that's, in this case, makes this an easier decision for me. Given a different set of circumstances, I'm not sure splitting a lot would necessarily benefit the character of Old Town, but I think in this case, I would, I would support this because of what we're trying to achieve.
Great, thank you. With that, did you have any other comments? Commissioner Krantz?
No, I was thinking that the, I found the addendum that was put in with the comments from our public works department. I think that, you know, I feel like if they've approved it, then it's, that there's not really an issue.
Great.
Just kind of thinking what there could be.
Thanks. With that, then, I would entertain a motion with the conditions as proposed by staff.
I'll move approval of Resolution Number 10 Series 2023, a resolution recommending approval of the minor subdivision, the Nicholas Di Giacomo Addition replat B, and with the one condition.
Thank you. We have seconds. Thank you. Commissioner Howe with the second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Basket?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Chair Brunnice?
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Coulson. With that, then, I'll open it up for planning commission comments.
Welcome, Commissioner Basket.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, yeah.
It's great to have you here.
Any additional?
I just think it's great to have a full commission. Thanks for all the hard work, for everybody who did the interviewing and, and recruiting such talent. It's great to see a full planning commission up here.
Excellent. Any staff comments?
Yeah, welcome. Welcome, Commissioner Basket, and congratulations to our new officers for this next season, however long it may be. We do have a pretty full agenda planned for you in May, so we, in addition to the enclave PUD amendment that we've all continued, we have one more fence amendment. May have another one waiting in the wings, and then we will begin our discussion related to the dark sky, adoption of the dark sky regulation. So Amelia has been working really hard on that, and we hope to be able to get that finalized for you for discussion in May.
Great, thank you very much.
Oh, and one other, just long-range planning, we signed a contract with a consultant to complete the housing plan. We have our kickoff meeting on Monday, so we are very excited about that, and we are going through interviews for comprehensive plan consultants this week and next week, so we are advancing those really big, important work.
Great, thank you very much, yes.
I didn't catch who you said the firm was.
So we contracted for the housing plan with Eco Northwest.
Is there an estimated award date for the comp plan?
We have blown past what was in the RFP at this point, just making sure schedules align, so we hope to make a decision in the next few weeks and then get a contract in front of city council with probably a late spring, early summer kickoff.
Any additional comments? Yes, Commissioner Krantz?
Is there any precedent for planning commissions making recommendation, making as a body, making any recommendations to our state government regarding the Senate bill, I think it's 23213? I mean, I understand that our city council has made a recommendation, but I think that some of the nuances might be of interest to our planning commission, other planning commissions, and is there a precedent for us taking something on that hasn't, we haven't been directed to do by council?
Typically, no. I mean, I think planning commission, when it comes to things that are outside of your, you know, typical process, I would say historically, we haven't done that.
that. Not to say we couldn't do that, you know, in the future for a land use bill or something at the state level, but historically within the city, no, that has happened at the council level, and you all as individuals, you know, are certainly able to make recommendations on that to your council members, have conversations, and, you know, this one was, is, and continues to happen at a relatively quick pace, so I know council, I think, wanted to make their position known relatively quickly. And depending on where this bill goes at the state level, you know, should things advance and become adopted, planning commission will, you know, certainly have discussions around how we would adopt these regulations locally.
Great, thank you. Additional staff comments? Nothing, all right, thank you. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Moline on the, yes, second?
Second.
Was that Commissioner Crants? All right, excellent, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you all.